There. There is a statute, joint meetings, believe it or not, and chairs. Boards can call them. It's six seventy-six two, for those of you wanting to look it up. And we can, might want to, going forward for applications, we can have a joint meeting to consider an actual application. That's not tonight. This is legislative. And as you know, we've been, people might want to turn their name tags around so everybody knows who's here. We've been charged with counsel to get together, to come up, see if we can come up as a group. This group right now, where the consensus for how to address the idea of solar panels and solar appurtenances in the historic districts. Assuming we can reach a consensus as this working group, the working group will, that meeting will stop, will convene a meeting of the planning board to make a recommendation to council. Again, it's not specific words. This is concept stuff tonight. And assuming we get to that stage, then Reagan and I will go to the council to explain it to council. Try to get their input to see if council is in agreement with the direction that this group has come, assuming that we get positive feedback. Then it will come back to actually wrap words around it and come up with the regulations. So we have to address the specific motion that the council put forth for us to consider. And it ranges from, from that, it ranges from doing nothing, which I wouldn't recommend, to getting very involved or and or considering, because the context of the historic district varies, as you well know, you know, from the South End through downtown, throughout Islington and Middle Streets. Very different context. You might think about treating it differently in different locations. Whether or not that's something, another thing that can happen is there could be different grades of solar panel use, certain, almost like the National Historic Criteria, maybe those are permitted very easily. If somebody wants to do something more than that, it might require more review. So with that, I think just we can begin the discussion. The way I think this normally works, if we didn't have a joint meeting, is the HDC would talk about this. Then the planning board would receive it, but I don't know if you guys want to talk among yourselves and invite our comment as we go along. To the extent any management of the meeting, the only reason I'm talking, joint meetings are supposed to be chaired by the planning board chair. That's why I'm talking so much. I'm gonna stop and let you guys take over.
Well, thank you for introducing the meeting. I just, I agree with everything you said. I think that we can have a discussion here that the HTC can start off with a discussion of what we're doing. I just want to make sure that we are really focused on how to make, you know, what can we do to make the use of solar panels and promote it in the historic district in the appropriate way, where it's still, we're still protecting the historic district. But still understanding and allowing the use of something that that people want to do with their properties, just like any other thing that we use, that we, you know, go through and and talk about where people would like to put a change in their property. So I don't know if anybody wants to, I mean, we've obviously talked about this a lot. We've had solar panel applications coming more and more frequently before us. Some I think that we can get through very easily and quickly and some that are more difficult. And I think that one of the things that we can do as a commission is to work to make the expectations we have, any guidelines, any guidance, any steps along the way, more clear and more simple for an applicant. So they have an idea of what to expect.
Thank you, Chair. And I don't know if you just want me to start, since I kind of brought us all here, in Council Denton, making the motion to remove the solar panels from the HTC. The reason why we thought here, obviously, there's been numerous applications in front of the HTC for solar panels. Some have been approved, some haven't. In the end, we found that a lot of ports of residents were frustrated that the HTC was even involved in that process. Giving our fight with climate change, even you know, they want more to look at it as, say, paint, like paint color is not part of the HTC's purview. You know, the residents that have reached out to me, they, you know, their belief is we should more consider it, like I said, as paint, they're not irrevocable changes. They're not changing the architecture of any building. They're not demolishing any building. And they're temporary. So it is a temporary change. It's not a permanent change. I imagine in twenty years, the solar panel industry will be much different, you know, the technology will be much different. Maybe you're even shingling your house, you know, and it doesn't look different in solar panels or not. But I'll just say that we, so that's why we were looking to remove it from them. We don't think that the local government should be getting in the way if residents want to put solar. But I appreciate everyone coming here tonight and having this meeting and look forward to everyone's opinions and discussion.
Um, I guess one of the things I'd like to get out of this group and from the HTC is where the frustration lies as far as why have some been okay to approve and some haven't? Like, where are the sticking points that maybe need to be adjusted in some way? So and I don't say you have to talk about specific applications, but if you can just talk about specific comments you might have about the way it works now and how we might be able to make it work better. I'd appreciate that.
I'll make a couple of comments, recognizing that everyone on this side of the table at least is in a, has their own thoughts on these things. One thing that makes solar panels less egregious to the historic fabric of a building is clearly the visibility of on the, we have a three hundred sixty degree historic district. In other words, I can walk all the way around your house. Figuratively. In Newcastle, we'll take for an example, they don't, they have a public way. Historic district, which lends to, honest to God, other problems. But, but it could be that, well, I guess up to this point, one of the things that we've looked at with solar panel applications is their visibility from the street, again, sort of in defiance of our three hundred and sixty degree purview. But using that as part of my criteria, how much of an impact this is going to have on the rest of the community? Another one is the, because of the, we'll say the non-standard ways that some historic properties were constructed or added on to overtime. The solar panels, because they come in large pieces, unlike your, someone's imagined in shingles. They end up looking kind of dropped like they fell off the truck rather than were intentioned from the house. The higgledy piggledy sort of panel arrangement. And so that, that's another part of the aesthetic of it, because let's face it, the Historic District Commission is a largely aesthetic organization. It's not just the preservation of some particular membrane or part of a building. It's the aesthetics of what that building looks like. And so those are, those are the things that used to pop up when someone wanted to put irrational grouping on the front of their building. It kind of, it never seemed appropriate, at least up to this point.
Thank you.
I ask a question about the three sixty rule, because I've worked as a contractor in the South End in the historic district. And it seems to me that there were significantly, I don't, I've never read it. That's why I'm asking a question, just to be clear. I'm counselled by HTC when I did the work in the South End, that like appurtenances and penetrations and things that stick out on the side or the back are completely different than on the front. In other words, I had to relocate HVAC equipment, so you couldn't see it from the front and vents for bathrooms and cooking vents, that they had to be positioned in a way that they were on the sides and not on the the house. So that doesn't seem to follow a three hundred and sixty degree rule. Is there exceptions for the side and the back somehow?
I think as individuals, that's one of the reasons that we have conversations or arguments with each other, as the impact of one particular kind of thing or another, recognizing that people by law need ventilations for their stoves and bathrooms. We've always sought to find the least aesthetically difficult position for it and encouraged applicants to make those kinds of decisions, to keep the front edge of the building pristine, but it's not codified in any manner in our ordinance.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I have no doubt that I agree with the idea of reducing our carbon footprints and utilizing alternate energy methods to reduce carbon output. I also agree that the HTC has a lot of work to do with our rules, especially houses that only have, that are perpendicular to the roads, that have two sides, or houses that are on side lots, and also probably different degrees of, as someone suggested of the HTC. We relax a little bit more as we get down Middle Street a little tighter when we're down the South End. But then I wondered what percentage of the problem is this? And do we need a whole new proclamation or law from the council? So I asked Isaac to pull me up some numbers. And if you look at structures, which means houses and garages and carriage houses and outbuildings, the HTC compromises only thirteen percent of all the structures in Portsmouth. If you look at parcel size, and you know, the South End has tiny parcels pushed together, we go up to about sixteen percent of the amount of parcel. So that sort of tells me that already ninety-three to ninety-six percent of Portsmouth can put solar panels on their roofs any way they want. The second thing is that a lot of our streets in the HTC will run east-west, which means that half of the houses on that street could put their solars in the back. So reduce that percentage even close to one half by having people put it in the backyards. So I wonder again, what, how big and what percentage is? The final thing is, there's a reason that there are more than fifty different colors of shingles. And there are at least ten different types of shingles. So I think one of the councillor said that, well, who looks at roofs? Well, I say, walk down your street, look at roofs. They're very interesting. They're different. And I think to some degree that maintains our neighborhoods and especially the historic district. And putting all the roofs shiny black certainly doesn't make for good feeling for historic Portsmouth, maybe more for love of town or something like that. Thank you.
Chairman. Chairman?
Yes.
It's Joe Almeida calling in on Zoom. I'm sorry. I'm wondering if I might be able to interject, and I'm sorry that I'm a little bit late. But if, if I could, I'd like to kind of redirect the tone and I want to fiercely defend the Historic District Commission here and their role in the city. I am, having been a member of that board for ten years, and also currently as a member of the Planning Board, I think I am very well suited to speak to it and I, I, I know the challenges and the trials that it takes for the HTC. I'm sorry, can you still hear me?
Yeah.
I don't want the HTC to feel like they're, they're doing anything wrong. I think they're doing a fine job. I, I believe that the motion should just simply be reversed or taken down and I, if anything, as you know, there's a very robust set of design guidelines that that the Historic District Commission has worked on for years, and perhaps they need to be updated to address this, this, you know, developing technology. Frustrations with the HTC is nothing new. It's a difficult, it's a difficult responsibility for historic building owner for sure, and it is a responsibility on their part. And it's a difficult task for an HTC member. And there's a huge responsibility of the applicant when presenting, you know, anything at all that could potentially harm the district. And let's face it, this is not an argument about whether or not we are supporting green technologies or green efforts. There is nothing more environmentally responsible than saving historic buildings and not adding to landfills and not employing modern materials with PVC and plastics. It's, it's just owning and maintaining a historic building alone puts you in a category of a preservationist and environmentalist. It really does. Anyway, I, I, as you can tell, I'm a little bit passionate about the topic. I'll let the conversation continue, but I will be very hard pressed to be convinced that, that this motion should, should move forward at all. Thank you.
Yeah.
Or did you want to?
Oh, no, no, I was gonna, we, I think we last called on two people at the same time.
Yeah, okay, go on, go ahead.
Two chairs.
Can I speak?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to address what Commissioner Blaylock said, that the public doesn't want to be told what to do with their homes. I mean, we're planning board, the HTC. I can appreciate that statement, but where would we be if, if, if the public couldn't be told what to do with their buildings, zoning regulations, there's all matter of building codes and requirements. Let's remember, solar panels are, are an option. They're, it's not like we have our homes in the city and they're relying on solar panels as a utility. It is a option to have. It's, it's a good option. I'm, I'm not completely against solar panels, but it is an option. Unlike some of the features that Vice Chair Mahana had mentioned, that you have to have these vents and things on the back of buildings. They're necessary. They're requirements. HVAC units. You know, these are things, these are, these are things that are necessary for living. But solar panels do not fall into that. So, you know, just given, given what is being requested, I just, I just find that the ask is, is is, is extreme. It is an extreme request that we do not even consider this for the HTC. It's not only the placement of the panels. These panels are incredibly foreign to the kinds of natural materials and historic materials in our district. So for that reason, I, you know, I, I would, I would beg anyone to take a look at what's been done by the HTC on this matter. I think we've done a great job with it. Can we do better? We can always do better, anywhere, everywhere. So I think we do better by explaining to the public what we're interested in in terms of preserving our historic environment, while still, in some cases, allowing these panels to be installed, because we should, we should be looking at this with a thoughtful process. So, thank you.
Yeah. Reagan or Mr. Chalm? Yes, I would like to make a suggestion first, as sitting out here in Zoom land, that whoever is speaking, introduce themselves.
Sorry.
I have no idea who I'm hearing.
Okay.
So I've got maybe ten minutes, five to ten minutes that I would like to get out. I've got an outline and I'd like to do it. Is that okay?
You want to spend ten minutes talking?
Five to ten.
Let's, let's, everyone a chance to just say if you think, but before we even go further, I just wanted to kind of echo what Joe Almeida had said, that let's try and make sure that we're directing this conversation towards what we want to do in terms of the recommendations for
Excuse me, Chair, but that's exactly what I want to do. And I'm here in an awkward situation, so I would like to
Great.
Be allowed to do this.
Can we have it in bite-sized parts? Could we have a minute or two now and perhaps a minute or two later?
Certainly, if everyone else keeps it short.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Go ahead, why don't you?
Are you allowing me to speak now?
Go ahead.
All right. Okay, so I'm, I, I could really run quickly past what we all know of unprecedented global warming and severe ice melt. We don't need to go over that. The calls from global countries throughout, over a hundred countries to cut carbon. I'll skip over that. Renewable energy policy of the City Council of March fifth, two thousand and eighteen was to promote the solar panels. So in my opinion, the solar panels should not be visible on defining structures in our district. So I'm talking about buildings that have been listed by Portsmouth Advocants as defining the North Church, the John Paul Johns House, et cetera, et cetera. But on other properties, the panels are, should be allowed. They should follow the angle of the roof if on a gabled structure. The people should file a plan for removal, not damaging the historic roof material and slate, et cetera. So in ten years, if they're going to take these off, they have to know how they are to be removed, and they can be removed. Painting all conduits, the roof color and the siding color, no removal of any chimneys, dormers, or anything to facilitate the installation of the panels. Consider around the perimeter of the panels, what's lightly called a squirrel apron. And this is essentially a two, two and a half inch piece of metal material that goes around the solar panels. And it would block the view underneath the solar panels. So I met, the panels should be installed over the existing roofing and no panels on siding. So there's been a lot of talk about solar shingles. And if anybody's done any research, and I've done quite a bit, I know that we did get a letter from Elizabeth Brader informing us more, but I, I believe that I really looked into it pretty well. The solar shingles, you have to strip the roof off of the structure, which is removing what we consider historic material, which is asphalt shingles. You have to remove those and then you have to install these solar shingles first. They don't weave in particularly well, if anybody understands what I'm trying to say, because they are at least twelve to fifteen inches wide, so they don't weave in with roof material, which is normally five inches or six inches exposure. And then the shingles have to butt up against them. These roof shingles, there's some kind of misunderstanding that they are going to look just like shingles. They don't. They look just like solar panels, but they are not as thick. They're only one inches, one inch thick, and so they go right on the roof, so they, they don't come up as high as solar panels. So I, I think that's a good thing, but we have to understand that, that the material has to be ripped off. And also that they are significantly more expensive than just putting solar panels on top of an existing roof. And if anybody even mentions the Tesla shingles, they're seventy thousand dollars. Now, I know that, you know, we often feel in the historic district that it's okay for us to keep people, you know, to a certain standard, even though it might not cost, you know, it'll cost more money for them to do things the way that we want them to do it, but the Tesla shingles are cost prohibitive. I've got details on Certain Teed, Sun Tegra, Luma and Timberline, but I'm going to hold off on all that stuff if anybody wants to discuss that later. So I'm under five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. At the
I think, I think you've got some good details, but I think there's some bigger picture questions that we need to address before we get to some of those. One of the ones that I know I've seen in the city, and I don't know if the HTC's dealt with this, but let's pick one that might be easy. What about ground-mounted solar? You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Appropriate in
Tractors?
Right.
Takes, takes a lot of land. During the day to follow the sun. That
It's, it's not an application that we've seen yet, and it certainly would be rare, because you would require a lot of space in your yard to do that, and the South End and a lot of the historic parcels are pretty small, so I think, you know.
Well, here's the worst Wouldn't, we would in fact see it, however, because it would by definition be a structure. So it would have to go before the ACC, because they're so large. It's a structure, but
I'm aware of that. Right. I was saying that we haven't seen it yet.
Right, right. We're talking about today going forward. What you've done in the past is wonderful. What you have regulations are great. They're going to be looked at. There's money in the budget to, you know, for you folks to work on those things. But we're trying to stay focused on solar and trying to come up with a consensus that we can take back to council and come back here. So I posed a question and Margot and then Rich have their hands up.
This is Margot, and I'm not going to answer your question, but I am, I am going to make a point, and, and I've been on the commission six or seven years, so long enough that I've lost track. And I remember turning down solar panels twice. And the one is still coming back to us and one withdrew. So our current guidelines have not been causing a lot of turn down of requests. So I think it's inappropriate for the council to remove the purview of solar panels from the HTC based on a perception that we're blocking these panels from appearing. Yes, it's true that some are already blocked, because they don't, they don't face the sun. The roof doesn't face the sun, or that the roof, sun-facing roof is facing the street. So, you know, I acknowledge that. But our current guidelines are not causing the, the bulk of the turn downs. It's the sort of circumstances and so on. So I think that we, simply by looking at the existing guidelines and maybe making some tweaks, such as dealing with the issue of perpendicular roofs, or what about maybe making an exception for an accessory building that's in the back, a modern garage, for example, that might have solar panels on it. That's not addressed in our guidelines. So I think we have some holes in our guidelines that if we improve, we can see some addition of solar panel use in the district that's still acceptable. The, Joe was right, that the HTC, when you preserve your building, you are making a big difference in your footprint. The purpose of the district is to protect these structures. And in protecting the structures, we also create an aesthetic. The problem with solar panels is that, yes, they're not permanent and they don't harm the building, but they affect the aesthetic. So we have this competing, you know, trying to find this balance between competing desires and goals of the district. So I think that there are lots of places that we, not lots, there are some things that we can do that would improve the use of solar panels in the district, make it easier for people to figure out what they can and can't do, maybe expand some things without lifting the entire
Not removing the authority.
Authority and oversight. Okay, that's a good one. From, from the process.
Thank you. Thank you, Margot.
Rich had his hand up. I thank you. And sorry, Commissioner Blaylock or Council Blaylock. But yeah, I just state that we, that's why we included the rooftop verage in the, in the amendment, but that was intentional. We, we went through legal and everything, but that's why we, we clearly put rooftop mounted. So we weren't talking about self-mounted.
Jim and then Andrew.
Yeah, this is Jim Hewitt. I'll be brief. I think this whole thing is a tempest in a teapot, frankly. I think it's an insult to the HTC volunteers. And I think you're all doing a fine job. Um, I think it's an insult to the HTC volunteers, and uh, I think you're all doing a fine job. And I'm not gonna recommend any changes.
Andrew?
Yeah, I think uh, going back to Commissioner Brown's comments about how there's, it's thirteen percent of the structures and sixteen percent of the landmass is a really critical statistic, and it, that works both for and against, I think, this point, and it's very twofold in the sense that it's a sensitive topic either way that you spin it. And in past amendments to zoning ordinance that we have reviewed, uh, it has been described to us that it is preferable to have one hand on the wheel rather than no hands on the wheel. Uh, having this type of ordinance in place for the HTC to review is, I think, a very safe measure. Um, and it's not particularly great to say, hey, let's go out and be subjective about how we review these proposals. However, with the fact that the HTC is an aesthetic board, as previously stated, being subjective is not the worst case scenario. And I do think if we look at it from the sense of, is there a reasonable alternative to the location of these solar panels on this structure? Then can we at least have a nice conversation with this property owner proposing to improve the efficiency and overall sustainability of their property? Because that in itself is part of not only HTC Board, Planning Board, but also the, the city's master plan. And that core competency of sustainability and ecological improvement is really, really important, and it's not going to go away. As much as you may think that, you know, the historic preservation is so important, we can't look at protecting historic structures as only a protection and the defense. It has to be an offensive strategy as well. Because these sustainable efforts are only even become more prevalent to us, and they're only going to increase. Although you've only seen two, I can promise you that you're going to see more, and that's not like this threat. It's like, how can we better manage our expectations as well as property owners' expectations to receive better feedback? So in the way that we review site plans, is there a best, or is there an alternative to the location of this development? Is there an alternative to the location of these solar panels? And is that something that we can be subjected about? If it's not, then how do we figure out a metric or some sort of uh, measuring stick to see if these should move forward or should not? Um, that obviously takes a lot more effort because it may take a site visit rather than just looking at the two dimensional plans and roof lines and orientation of a home is going to drastically change the way that the solar panels are affected. So sorry to be long-winded, but, oh, John, this is Andrew Simonis, by the way.
Um, thank you.
I do think uh, having the control is certainly better than not having the control whatsoever. Now let's further refine that to be uh, clear for those that have to look at this and manage their expectations when trying to improve the sustainability of their structure. Because we are very old housing stock in this city. We know that. How do we make it better? Uh, how do we mitigate some of the, the rising water that we've seen in the last month and a half? How do we mitigate some of these uh, high energy costs that people in the South End who have probably lived there for longer than the others in the city? How do we allow these folks to stay in place longer? And mitigating the cost of living for them through sustainability efforts, I think is the only way that you're going to achieve that. So how do we allow these folks to stay in place? And how do we allow them to achieve some of these things that may reduce that cost of living?
Very nice.
Hi, uh, Larry Boo's John, so uh,
Hello.
My life. Anyway, first of all, apologize for coming in about six oh five, but I literally got back in town from a medical event about a hundred and a half before that. So I raced around circles and here I am. But um, so here's my take on it. Um, to even say, taking away the power from the HTC is a temporary measure, I think you're kidding yourselves. I think that's a slippery slope. I think um, it's very dangerous for anybody to say, we don't like what this group has said, and we don't like what they're doing, so we're gonna remove all power from them, or any item. And that's a very slippery slope because if today it's solar panels, maybe tomorrow it's, you know, vinyl siding. You know, it, it's a very slippery slope. And I'm the new guy. It says alternate, but I can say this, every single one of these people I've gotten to know in this board has just impressed me beyond all measure. Because they're not here because you're being paid. They're not here because it's a power, Nebraska power or anything like that. They're here because they love Portsmouth, and they're here because they wanna preserve Portsmouth the way it is. And if you go back to the nineteen sixties, that takes us back to the Strawberry Bank days, and I'm very active in that organization, so I know a little bit what I'm talking about. And I guess what I'm trying to say is, to back away from all the specifics, do we really need to reinvent the wheel and change what we're doing? And I'm gonna give some towns to compare. And I know before you enter your recommendation, you're not gonna go out and drive through these towns. But if you drive through Melrose, Massachusetts, there's no guidelines, and that's what we're talking about here. And the solar panels are facing the street about every fourth home. And you will see beautiful Victorian historic properties, seventeen hundreds, and right there it is on the front. There's a couple even in the front yard. And that's why I said this is a very slippery slope. You gotta be careful what you're doing. There's no guidelines. I happened to be in Concord, Mass on business, and I had a conversation with the guy at the hardware store, and I said, what do you guys do for solar? Now, okay, it's a hardware store. I didn't talk to the town council. But he said, we have solar. Walk around the back of the buildings. It's there. It's just our regulations don't allow it to be seen because we are an historical seventeen seventy-five American Revolution town. Similar things in Newburyport, Mass, or Newport, Rhode Island. So what I'm getting at is this, why do people come here? Okay, it's got good food. Okay, there's arts. Why else do they come here? Because it's an absolutely adorable, historic, beautiful little town. And just like Margot said and James said, and even what Andrew said about the aesthetics, if you change that aesthetic equation, you're not just, you know, doing it to improve somebody's energy efficiency, you change the aesthetic equation, you're also tinkering with why people come here to begin with. And there are other ways, addressing Andrew's comment, there are other ways to encourage energy conservation beyond solar. You know, maybe somebody who their house doesn't meet um, the criteria for solar in the historic district. Maybe you uh, find a way to encourage replacement windows or something. And I realize that's another whole topic, and that's what we're talking about tonight. But that's what Andrew was saying. How do you encourage other people in the South End to remain energy efficient? Stay in their homes and preserve that historic nature. There's other ways to do it other than just solar. So I guess that's my, I'm gonna come back and just close out by saying it's a very slippery slope, and you gotta be careful what you wish for. Thank you.
Jane?
Yeah, hi, I'm Jane Begala. Um, and so in listening to everybody, what I hear is really um, a balance trying to be achieved between historic preservation, visual integrity of older buildings um, for our town, and also the whole clean energy transition. And it is a transition. We don't exactly know where it's going. These things could be temporary. They, there could be even uglier things coming down the line. Who know, uh, who knows? Who knows? But for me, the question that's been posed to us through this proposed amendment is really, who is going to review this balance? And, and, and to me, the people who are the best situated to maybe even set more um, clear guidelines and criteria than already exist is HTC themselves in order to apply it within the historic preservation context. I, I can't imagine removing that from their purview. I, I think that there's no, who, then, then there is no we. Then there is all these things we're talking about. There's no one to actually, to actually make sure that we get standards in the city that, that our boards agree to, that there's some kind of requirement as we look at how the city across the board looks, not just peripheral, peripheral to downtown, but all of downtown, including our historic areas. So I just, I, I can't imagine this going out of the purview of the HTC, because then if it does, there is no we.
Mr. Chair, it's Greg Mahad, Vice Chair of Planning Board. Following your request for moving forward consensus, uh, Joe started it. Uh, Joe Almeida on the planning board. Uh, Vice Chair Margot did a great job getting into the nuts and bolts of what's going on. So I agree with what everybody said. It needs to stay at HTC. I think that the HTC should take a nice look at the ordinance and, and plan for the future. Um, unlike uh, Board Member Wykoff said, the um, the Tesla product, they've only installed three hundred of them, but it looks a heck of a lot better than, than the old PV panels. And just speaking for other industries, flexible solar panels are all the rage in the whole marine environment. Every, every boat that has a roof has, has solar panels on it, and the technology is running, running rampant. So these folks are the ones that are qualified to assess what types of panel. That would be my first suggestion, is assess what types of panel. And also, you know, thinking about the appurtenances and the, the hardware, um, you guys tried, somebody tried to call that stuff something. And needless to say, I mean, my, my own office building has solar on it, and those big transformer switch metering things on the side, they're ugly as heck. They shouldn't be on the front of the building, and they shouldn't be visible, just like we talked about in the South End. So, and then um, well, Boz over there had some great ideas that were, he followed up on what um, Andrew said. We had kicked this around a little bit, and one of the things you, you know, when you're considering an application is require the um, applicant to do an energy audit. Usually they're free, you know, so if you got a guy in a, in a seventeen hundreds house like I, I had in the South End, and it was on oil, and there's gas on the street, they'll bring it into the building for free. I mean, let's just talk about things like that from an overall energy perspective, and, and you've got a great idea there, and you're on the HTC. So um, in closing, I think that this, the motion from City Council should, I don't know what the mechanics are to make it go away, but I think it should stay with the HTC.
We don't need, just to make it clear, we don't need a motion. I think that's, it's just consensus tonight.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't making
And just to make it clear, I don't, if anybody gets the impression that I'm trying to take anything away from HTC, I'm personally not. That's not, that's not the goal here, but I think there's a political reality here also. And one of my earlier questions, and we can bring up a map of the historic district if you wanna look at it and remind everybody, you know, the South End to me is very different than Middle Street and parts of isn't Constreet. And the downtown even, because the downtown is a lot more commercial. So speaking as an engineer and a land planner and somebody who's written a lot of regulations, I can see a distinction between some of those areas that maybe we'll get to, and you'll get to, and then we'll help make a recommendation, because technically we have to make a recommendation to council. That's a planning board role. So that's why we're sitting here, and we're, we're here to help as best we can. Uh, it is an HTC question. I don't want you to feel defensive. You know, this is a new topic, and um, it's not a criticism of what you've been doing. It's just here's something new. People don't like the unknown to criticize them. I can say, when you come into the historic district in Portsmouth, it's not a lot different than if you're buying into a subdivision with a list of restrictions and covenants, you know, forty pages long. You know what you're buying into. You know what you're buying into, and you buy into the historic district in Portsmouth. So you don't get free rein to do whatever you want. Because it is, it, it's a, the public benefit outweighs the private loss. That's the test. And it's a, it's a huge benefit to the city. There aren't that many neighborhoods in the United States that you can walk around like parts of our historic district. So um, I would like to try to whittle off different things that we could come up with in terms of consensus. I don't think you're leaning towards allowing pre-standing, at least in the South End, but maybe that's one of the questions. Should, should the historic district be treated differently from a solar perspective in different sections? We don't have to decide which, you know, where those lines are, but does that make sense to think about? You know, is the South End different than Middle and Islington? Or should it be? Just for solar?
It is.
Make a comment to that, Chairman? Um, I'm old enough to remember when we had a historic A and historic B districts. And I don't recommend anybody goes back to that. That, that two different kinds or flavors of historic district, I think, difficult at best. Next comment is you're suggesting that the average person, and I know that's not what we're designing this for, but you have to consider them. The average tourist coming wheeling into town is going to understand that there's a difference in the architecture of Middle Street compared to the architecture of Gate Street. Uh, I think there's a subtlety there that while we all understand that and recognize the time periods and whatnot, I don't think the average person coming to town, again, we're not designing the whole system for them, but they're a significant part of it.
Can you just touch upon why that's relevant? Because I was about to follow up with his comment about maybe making a tiered or hierarchy of sections, but clearly you have a different thought, which is more important.
Why it's relevant that, that we have
No, why, why, why wouldn't it be good to have A and B or tier one, tier two, tier three?
Uh, honestly, because we spend maybe not a lot of time, but a significant amount of time with people get to that irate port, part of the conversation at a commission uh, meeting. Uh, they frequently point to places that you could do that, and I don't see why my house, my house is a Victorian house, even though it's in the South End where everything else is Georgian. My house is a Victorian house. I should be able to have solar panels on my roof like the Victorian houses on the upper end of Middle Street. It will be the argument. It just, it's just creating the opportunity for another argument, creating the opportunity for another person to ignore the recommendations of our commission's charter and, and say that I should have this. Or I, if I argue well enough, I'll get it, or if I hire a lawyer, I'll get it, or enough engineers. Or wait till Dave's sick that night, or something like that.
And that does help.
Could I jump in? Yes, this is um, this is just a sort of subjective argument that, that we've heard, and this is why we're at the position that we're at right now. Um, I, I would agree that the entrances to the city being Middle Street and Islington Street as far as solar, if um, it looks like you're going to recommend that nothing be done, which I hope you don't, um, I would at least say that um, that those sections coming into the city should possibly be taken out of our purview as far as solar energy panels go. But the, the one thing that we don't understand, when we're talking about preserving um, the, the district and preserving the city is, is that is essentially what we were created for many years ago, but we have since been adding, uh, nibbling down on small items that um, so many of them are not as important as we might think they are for our historic district. Originally, and I'm old enough to remember, the district was created to stop the demolition of buildings downtown by the banks, and uh, that was the big problem at the time. And then uh, as time went on, we started looking at a, a variety of things. I can remember also that at one time, just as controversial as solar panels was um, chimney caps. So you're all saying, what are chimney caps? Well, those are the things that everybody has on top of their chimney to prevent um, animals, et cetera, but also they're required if you have a gas furnace going into a chimney. And um, my God, you would have thought it was the end of the world. People wanted to put chimney caps on, and now they're all over the place. Um, times change, and we have to change with it. Our, as long as our buildings, the front and our streets have the closeness that they have, that's what really makes a historic district too. Let's face it, is our, our little wormy streets going on in and out of the South End. Um, as long as we not changing the structure of buildings, I think that we still have our historic district. And a lot of people that come into our city are not coming in to look uh, at the Moffett Ladd House. A lot of the people are coming to go to the decks and eat at our restaurants. Thank you.
I disagree with that.
Well, let's, 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 let's see if we can stay on, on topic.
I just hope Paige Trace isn't watching.
Oh.
Chairman? I'm sorry, um, Chairman Joe Almeida, could I just very quickly
Yes.
um, say a couple more words. Um, I, I um, um, Mr. Adams had a lot of very good input. And um, I just wanna elaborate on one thing that he had said, and, and, and I heard John, Mr. Wykoff also. We talk a lot about the pleasure of, of visitors to the city. Um, I'm, I'm just as concerned as, equally if not more concerned about the rest I'm I'm just as concerned as equally, if not more concerned about the residents of the city and 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 the people who take care of these builders and pay for the builders and walk through the streets every single day. I just, I don't want anyone to feel as though we're, you know, we do all of this just simply for visitors that are coming here for a few hours of the day. This is a, this is a very important charge for the HTC and you know, it's not just for, it's it's a much bigger, it's a much bigger charge than just doing this for for tourists, but I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Chair.
Hi, Paul Giuliano, Planning Board. I I recognize the City Council has broad powers and authority in this area. And what what I want to ask is should the proposed amendment pass? You know, what what does that look like? Like, is is, is anybody looking at how to incorporate solar panels discreetly into a structure? Or is it, am I, am I standing on Pierce Island Bridge looking over at Mechanic Street? And there's, you know, solar panels that have contrasting colors to them, you know, some of them are all black, which is better than ones that have like a grid pattern and have a contrasting border to them or the way, and we're not talking about a panel, we're talking about an array, right? Like, how do you, how do you design this and incorporate this? I, I want to see the HTC do more with solar. And and I can't think of a better group to, to incorporate them discreetly into those buildings.
Well, as worded, it would not address the issues you're talking about. It would be solar panels flush mounted to the roof would be permitted, period. No HTC review. So that's that, if that explains that.
Yeah, I'll just remind everyone to, you know, we're looking at the the workers that was provided. You know, we're looking for recommendations on that, but I don't want to get, you know, focused after that, off of that.
I think where this topic, as I understand the way this topic came about, the first motion was much more broad. And I had some concerns with that because I did some research on it and I I found examples where it was used as a device. Because if you remove entirely the HTC authority for solar energy, me and I can explain it, it's, it would be extremely bad because now you can remove buildings for solar access. So you you basically eliminate the demolition oversight. That's not what's being proposed. Just saying, just started and based on some research I did in other jurisdictions, that's the worst case scenario. There are bad actors out there who look for worst case scenarios, you know, so. And that's part of my job to look for things like that, so that's why I found it. I think, I think back to my point earlier about political reality, that did pass by an eight to zero vote. That's the political reality. I think I see it, the charge for us as a group coming from you for us, the planning board to take to the council is something, some refinement. Now, you you can say that refinement may maybe do nothing. That's your, it's completely your option. If that's your option, and some people do feel that way, that's fine. I question if that'll survive the day, honestly. So I encourage you to think, try to think beyond that if you can. And I I know the AB historic district was an issue. From where I've looked at, this is, if you did something different from a solar perspective, it, there, this is a difference, it's a new thing. It's easy to show colors on a map or, and that would be the easiest way to show the difference. Maybe there'd only be two, maybe there could be three, there could be however many you wanted. But you could treat it differently. Because just the the size of the blocks and the streets in the South End where the buildings are as close as we are, that's very different than on Middle Street when it's, you know, what's that going on over on the other side of the street? So just from a design perspective, it makes sense to me that that might be considered differently, but I better shut up. Go ahead.
Finally chime in. Lots of things have been, lots of points have been made that are very good, some that I want to address and echo. One is that where I start. We, as a historic district commissions, and we say this pretty much at every meeting with most of the applications is that we look at every single application and every single property at, on its own. So it would, it might be very difficult to just lump a whole group of properties in an area together to say, yeah, they're not quite as important as the ones over here.
It's not about importance, it's about difference.
Right. No, 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 I know what you mean. But you know, what, what might be appropriate for one building or one house might not be appropriate for the house next door. This is what we, having an understanding of historic properties, of historic architecture and trends, understand, you know, we have to take that into consideration when we're looking at everything. So but however, we, our ordinance does also have exemptions. We have areas where we can, where there are certain things that that we, in the, at least in the past, maybe not this particular group, but the HTC has agreed on in the past are fine, that doesn't need to come to us in turn, you know, like wooden storm doors. You know, if you want to put a play structure in New York, you don't have to come before us anymore. You know, there are certain things that I think that we as a historic district commission could look at, could have a a work session or even a subcommittee to to look through our guidelines, look through the ordinance and say, okay, if you have, you know, there are certain areas where you know, a commercial building downtown, tall, flat roof, if you have one of those buildings, put solar panels up top as long as it's a certain amount away, you know, away from the edge of the buildings, something like that. Maybe those things can be an exemption, something that we don't have to look at. If there's, you know, if we know that there's going to be no visual impact, you know, fine. But I think that our guidelines were never meant to be static. And they were done at a particular time and as the technology changes and as trends change and as things, as as our thought processes change, those guidelines have to be updated as we go. So I think that it would be a great opportunity for us in this situation when talking in solar panels. Our guidelines as they stand on solar panels are very basic. They've can't, you know, in some instances, they are very clear and they do well. However, obviously in other instances, they're not clear and like Martin said, we can always do better. So I would love to have the opportunity as the HTC, I don't know about you guys, this is me again speaking, to to look at those and to try and make a good effort towards making at least our approach to solar panels clear that we, you know, we have no opinion on, you know, whether they're good or bad. If you want to bring them, if you want to put them on your house, we are going to do like we do with everything else, help you to make it work as best as possible while still preserving the integrity of the district. I don't know if it's first, Beth, go ahead.
I just was looking at the exemptions you guys already currently have and there's one. I'd like to read to you, it's placement or replacement of ground mounted mechanical or electrical equipment, including a generator where the equipment is located behind the structure and is not in public view. And two, all ductwork or equipment feeds are located in the building's interior or immediately adjacent to the equipment. So I'm foreseeing you guys coming up. And so my wish would be that the HTC comes up with some simple exemption that does it when you can't see it, just like some of your other ones. And then maybe also clean up the guidelines. So I think we could craft a recommendation back to City Council that it's kind of a twofold, that there should be an exemption. We're not exactly sure what that looks like, but we think the HTC could come up with that. And two, we'd really like to see them clean up the guidelines to accommodate new technology and, you know, maybe unique circumstances. I can't think of exact words, but something like that. But I think that the HTC should be able to be given the opportunity to do that. I'll shut up.
So I think, Ricky, you mentioned political realities and and politics. I, my take on what's happened is that the HTC has been, I can't remember the first year that we allowed the the solar panels on the house on Middle and Austin Street, but since then, the guidelines have been simple, not very refined and subject to a lot of precedent. So, you know, in the front, in the back, this way, that way. And we've been saying, and anybody who's been on the board for a while will will know that we keep saying to ourselves, you know, we really should be a little more clear on that. We really should rewrite our guidelines. And time goes by and the next month rolls by and it doesn't happen and it doesn't happen. And, you know, here we are, we've let it go for five years and now the council is giving us a slap up the side of the head and saying, hey, you haven't done anything, so we're going to do something for you. And, okay, we hear it. The message is clear. So I think that now we need to do what we said we were going to do, you know, over the past couple of years and improve our guidelines, be very specific. I met a contractor once who said he loved working in Nantucket because their rules are so specific. You don't have to think twice. You know exactly what to do. You know exactly what size it is and what color it needs to be. To the extent that we can make common rules while recognizing that there are going to be exceptions and there are going to be different properties. If we can come up with some of those guidelines that say, okay, here's your starting place. If you fit into this box, you're going to go to an admin approval and and it's going to be fine. If it starts to look more like this or more like that or more like that or or whatever, then we're going to have to look at it carefully and specifically. And I think if we just ask the City Council to give us the opportunity to do that, they can hold off on on the the big hammer. And let us, let us work on this, is what I would ask.
He's raising a hammer.
I think that's well said, Margot.
I agree, it's very well said. Council Blalock, I'm, I know Council Denton's not here. But I also know he presented to the HTC eight years ago. And like you said, nothing has happened, no changes, no, nothing, no acknowledgement, nothing. So I imagine he's probably frustrated, but I will just, I just want that to be stated. And like again, I, you know, we compared this to, I compared it to paint. You know, paint is not on our purview. I think it might be in Nantucket or I think it might even be in Rye. You know, we didn't used to allow so, sunroofs. They weren't allowed in the HTC. Sorry, no sunroof yet. But skylights weren't allowed, you know, and I, I that's more of a irrevocable change than I think applying a solar panel to a roof. So in my mind, it falls in between the paint and the skylight. But I just wanted also for the record to state that Council Denton did provide, did present to the HTC eight years ago.
And can I just say in defense of that, there are maybe one or two of us that are of that same group that he presented to, so it's totally a different group.
No, I'm not putting any fun in it, I'm just saying that that would be out.
Picking up on what Margot said and I, I agree, sorry for my, I couldn't resist with Council Blalock raising his hand. You, you made a very good set of arguments, but you also said earlier that there were areas that you knew could be changed. Is there any low hanging fruit that you can point to that could be brought back to the council and say, you know, this has been an issue, this is one thing we would think to add to the list that Council Moreau brought up. We have, we have this room for an hour approximately. I think if if, if it would be a good idea if possible, and I'm happy to go home, trust me, but you guys to come up with something that we could take back, because if you can show progress, not say it's just we're going to have a meeting. If that's what your decision is, we'll advocate it for sure. But if you could do a little bit more, I think it would help.
Are you asking for thoughts right now? Because I've thought about, okay, so if I were to put things, if I were to make a short list of places that we would look at, it would include refining the definition of back of the house when you have a roof structure that lies perpendicular to the road, but you know, where's the front, where's the back? How does that, how does that come in? If it's completely on the back of the house, should we have any say over the placement of the panels or not? Let's, let's get that, let's get that dealt with. What do we do about the things that hang off of the, off of the side of the building? We already have rules about mini splits and and generators and HVC, HVAC units down the thought. We, so let's get that modified. Accessory structures. So you have a historic house in the front and in the nineteen seventies, somebody put a garage in the back and the garage faces perfectly to the south. Put that on the shortlist of things that are easy to approve. Are there, are there some things we can absolutely say no to and and that would just guide people immediately? And that might be, I think in South Carol, in South Carolina and Charleston, if it, if the roof appurtenance, I think is how they put it, obstructs a key feature like a gable that's important or a widow's walk or something like that. So if we could come up with a few, with a list of no's, you know, I would put some there. Front of house, permanently damaging. I don't know if we need to have a plan for removing them thirty years from now because somebody's going to lose that plan and, you know, where's it going to be? So those are like right off the top of my head without spending a whole lot of time thinking. Those, that's where I would start my list and probably the other commissioners have some that they've been noodling over as well.
I, I can't see where you would cover twenty percent of your house with a glass, with a shiny glass metal panel and not want the HTC to look at that. I just can't. I, I, I don't think we could sit here and it, it's kind of like when the Supreme Court said, you know pornography when you say it, there needs to be a judgment call. And so we could end up writing a war and peace sized copy of the guidelines and it would only confuse the public even more. And I think that's part of our problem. I don't think the public understand, it's a mystery to them, what we do and how we judge things. And that's our failing, I think. So we have a, we have one sentence that covers solar panels. And I don't think that's good enough. I think if someone comes into City Hall with an application for solar panels, they should walk away with at least a, a, a page of of guidance and not a guidebook. Same with windows. So I, I would be reluctant to sit here and say, okay, let's start writing the gospel according to how solar panels should be put in the HTC. I think it's one of these things that solar panels have such an impact to a home that, that we'd be irresponsible not to judge them in a meeting. And to just say, here's your, you know, you've, you've made it through these you know, these hoops and you can just simply not have to go in front of the HTC. It's just too big an impact, in my opinion. Thank you.
May I ask Martin a question? Is, is there a room for something in between where it would be an admin approval as opposed to a full hearing?
Well, I, I would say that an admin approval to me should be where the city is, the planning department is looking at something and say, we see no problem with this, but let's get the blessing of the board. Let's, you know, that should be more of a, I don't want to say rubber stamp process, but an admin approval shouldn't be a very big impact questionable situation. It should be some of the replacement and kinds what we saw in their last meeting. But, no, I, I, I just I don't want to say do nothing. But I think we can improve the process a little better and we do that by educating the public on what to expect when coming to the board. That would be my, my recommendation to you.
Hi, Larry. You know, I'm just expounding the last three comments, which I think, you know, you guys all said really good stuff. Back to the three towns I had mentioned earlier. And again, I've not looked at their ordinances. I don't know what they say. I just know when you drive the streets of Newburyport or Concord, Massachusetts, the solar panels are there, but you don't see them. And maybe it's as simple as that. And I mean, what Margot said was, I think, like near genius, the way she worded that. That's good. But the way you, the way you worded that, like for buildings in the back and stuff and I was But the way you, the way you worded that, like for buildings in the back and stuff, and I was a Monvo member, but I think a few months ago, there was somebody before the board, they wanted to put them on the side facing the street, but behind they happened to have an extra building, like a garage or something like that. The house, if I remember correctly, the roof face just asked a question, said, what direction is that face? They said north, south, solar panels on the south. But you know what, the sun rises in the east and the sun sets in the west. The garage in the back just happened to have east, west facing slope. So there's, you know, there's different things that might possibly work, but just, but you know, if you can drive by it and see it, you know, then maybe that's a no, but maybe it's an automatic yes if it's on the back and you can't see it at all. You know, it's something that's simple, it doesn't need to be, you know, this, like I used to said earlier, this whole slippery slope where we're removing power and oversight because the next thing you've got, you know, a solar farm somewhere in downtown Portsmouth.
With all respect, I would like to say that, um, the solar panels are going to be on the south side of the house, I think we all know that. So our arguments about front and back are sort of, um, is a yes or no. In other words, if you tell somebody they have to put solar panels on the north uh, roof of their house, that's not going to happen. But, um, I was, the the discussion that we had about the back of the house, this has been uh, something that has really been a gentleman's agreement for us, excuse me, um, for, I don't know, ten years or so. It really doesn't work all the time, because no matter where you go in Portsmouth, you go to the next street over, you can see the back of that person's house. And that's where we get into lots of arguments and we've had these arguments over the condensing units, uh, for the mini splits. And the mini splits are something that somebody's going to have to talk about, but not tonight. But they are the most efficient heating and air conditioning source. So I I'm just commenting on the back of the house, um, not being, doesn't work all the time. So we're going back to the subjective nature of our decisions. And that was the problem on Newcastle Road is the one person said, well, it wasn't, the aesthetic of it wasn't good. And another person said they didn't look good, the arrangement of the solar panels on the back of this person's house. Yet again, nobody in the neighborhood came out and said, we don't like this project. And the, and we turned it down. But the other thing I want to say is nobody has come up to me and said, I think that you guys should not allow any solar panels in the historic district. As a matter of fact, everybody says, God, when are you guys going to get with it? You know, what what is all of this? Essentially, we're, we're fighting against the majority right now, and I just can't figure out why we're doing it. So I I would hope that, um, I don't know, cooler heads might prevail. Thank you.
Um, I got a question for the HTC, on any of the prior projects uh, with solar panels installed on historic structures, has fire safety been an issue? Has anyone, uh, any of those properties had to come up to compliance or conform to be able to incorporate those?
One rubist concern from the fire department is a walkable surface around the panels so that they can actually get access to the roof. I I'm not, I'm not in the business, I don't know why, I don't know what they needed for, but there's a a definite requirement and they're they're very specific about, which makes all solar arrays, even on flat spacious planar roofs, it's look like they're in a corral of sorts, uh, for all properties, for all, my knowledge, it's 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 about accessibility by the fire department. And so I assume that's everyone.
Well, as far as like nothing specifically.
To your point, one of the first steps reaching a smoke filled and fire filled building is ventilating the roof, so I hadn't even thought of it. You're right.
Yep. So yes, it does get involved.
Yeah, Rich Blalock, um, I'll just state that, yeah, the fire department will prevent someone from installing, um, solar panels if they can't do it and it's safe, and I think that's part of the building permit process or when they, um, you know, create a, uh, any permit. Um, and also the fact that it has to be south facing. So those two variables already limit who can put solar panels and who cannot. Just to state.
Folks have any thoughts on, I mean, Margo came, I was writing down some of the things she said and some of the things that were said afterwards. Does this idea of refining some of these definitions and maybe possibly either defining your admin approval process, adding to it? Coming up with a list of definite no's? Perhaps having a one or two page sheet that's graphic oriented to explain to people what how to do this process and what makes sense so that the layperson coming in can see as it can go, oh, okay, now I get it and not have to hire necessarily. These, these sorts of things start to make sense?
It's true to me. We rarely, sir, excuse me for butting in, I'm sorry, it's not uh, we rarely speak to architects about solar panels. Typically, it's some engineer from some company that's in California that has pasted something down on a a Google Earth map. Uh, and that's the level of sophistication that's brought to this, I'm sure they know the voltages.
Right. Um, but You gotta watch those engineers.
Pardon?
Gotta watch those engineers.
I'm not going to say that out loud. Yeah, well, I I'm I'm a, you know, general contractor and I would think I'm worse, but it but I may will pull risk sometime. Anyway, it's it's, it's difficult. Most of these, no, most, a large number of the applications that come before us are not brought to us by concerned homeowner, this, I'm not saying there isn't one, but they're not brought to us that way. The cold, can't answer anything, but these are the voltages sort of way is what we get most of the time and options are rarely if ever discussed. Uh, it's, I would say that, uh, I'm going to get into trouble eventually, um, but I would say that that most, most of the applications are driven by something other than the aesthetics that we're concerned with. And yeah, I'm not saying that they're not caring, but their concerns get pushed aside greatly. It's really easy to have an aesthetic conversation with someone that is actively involved in the aesthetics of that conversation, a homeowner looking at their investment and their next door neighbors looking at that investment, but but this is cold, this is all numbers, this is, and and I can't, okay, I don't know everything about it, uh, but but it's hard, it's hard to break, it's impenetrable sometimes. We can have a conversation go on for an evening about the kinds of sessions that put, that people put in their buildings. And and the solar panels are, it's like buying Hamburg at the grocery store, it's a thing in a package, you either want it or you don't.
Well, I saw nodding of heads on this side of the room when I was going through the list. The other thing I think it's important that I'm hearing, I didn't say it, but you're feeling a really important reason to preserve discretion. Because it's, you can't, it's not arithmetic, you can't get this all quantified down to, uh, slopes and angles and, you know, engineering stuff. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah.
Um, and I I'll just chime in too and say that I I agree with all the suggestions here. I also think that we could even in this, within this discussion, go a little bit further with our, you know, with modern sustainability, you know, this is, this is really part of the whole impetus for solar panels and, um, even look at that components of our guidelines that deal with that, so that's windows, that's, um, insulation, it's doors, you know, all all the things that that go that are involved with that. So I think that that would give us an opportunity to also address those things. Maybe storm windows, right now, the only exemption that's in there are for wooden storm windows. You don't have to come to us if you put wooden storm windows on, but maybe we want to say any storm window, because you're still promoting the, the, um, retaining existing window and not adding to a landfill. So these are some of the things that I think that we could even just go farther than just solar panels, what we do.
I mean, if on the planning board you can't see how we're discussing this right now, if you can just transfer this to a public hearing and the same arguments that you're hearing right now are going to be on the public hearing, you can understand why we've gotten ourselves into trouble. And it, there again, it all goes back to the subjectiveness and where you can see them, where you can't see them. That's why I'm saying that they should be allowed in the historic district. Thank you.
Yeah, it's Jim Hewitt, um, when I said earlier, what my last conclusion, I didn't want any changes made. What I meant was, uh, no changes to the HTC authority. But I certainly believe that there could be more guidance on your website, and I visited quite a few times and I I ended up visiting a lot of websites around the country, HDCs and what they used for guidance. And, uh, an overarching document, or not overarching, but one document that came up quite often was, um, a eight page guidance document that was published by Clean Air Cool Planet about fifteen years ago, they had an office here in Portsmouth. And it's called, um, Energy Efficiency, Renewable Energy and Historic Preservation, A Guide for Historic District Commissioners. So, um, I just want to bring that up as maybe a starting point for you guys to use as maybe customize that for Portsmouth. So, um, what I have on that.
Thank you.
I don't have that.
How do, how does this side of the room feel about the, and beginning of a consensus that I was hearing on this side?
You know, there's broader implications to putting solar arrays on a historic building, there's multiple uses within the district. Seem to be focusing our conversation on residential, that's where you typically think of it, but there's, there's multiple uses within the district, there's preservation and then there's historic and, um,
There are also new buildings in the district.
There are new buildings which are, you know, maybe more, um, it it maybe, it it it's, there are things that are ubiquitous, right? Like a telephone pole, something that wasn't there four hundred years ago, but we all accept that they're there. Solar panels just really haven't gotten that status yet, they might someday, but right now it's like, you know, solar panel, you know, I I it 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 needs to be done discreetly and that's going to require a a concerned, uh, land use body to to put that effort into that. I I don't expect the industry to regulate itself in in that manner. They'll, they'll, they'll get it up as quickly and you know, it's like the guy that comes to puts the satellite up, right? It's got to face south, he goes right to the front of the house, bam, there it is, like, couldn't you put that around the sides and find the southern sky?
There's no building permit on those either.
The other thing that one of the public comments, and we talked about it when the the chairs met, uh, a couple of weeks ago, whenever we met, is solar farms, the city could look at, uh, doing solar farm and perhaps giving people in historic districts some special access to it, you know, first things or something like that. So they could be doing something for the environment, but not necessarily having to put something on their building in the historic district. That's, you know, I think something that the city could look at and maybe is, I don't, we've talked about it a few times, um. The idea, the planning board has started talking about doing more, allowing more solar, making a recommendation to council to allow more solar in the zoning elsewhere in the city. But that's not the tonight's topic, you know, we're we're trying to stay on, uh, coming up with some recommendations in the next thirty minutes, and I I've got some. How about, um, Reagan's idea that commercial buildings maybe be treated differently? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. We have old Victorian houses on Middle Street that are businesses, right? So is that a commercial building? It was a residential building and it converted to commercial, so I think you have to be careful about the use of the building and what the building was originally built for.
Which means it could be, it should be treated differently because we're talking about something, you know, we're having, that would be one of the criteria, what what is the building? Not just refused, so.
Or just the fact that they have flat roofs, you never see. Interesting enough, all the
Flat roof might be it.
Buildings that are being built, uh, by the mill pond, not one, not one is putting so.
Ten years reviewing buildings, I don't know, sound bitter, but reviewing buildings, being built, new buildings built where anything that they wanted to do, they could just draw in in the planning stage, not one, not one. This is just, this is all about somebody from somewhere else telling people they're going to get something for nothing and selling them the stuff. And and that pressure is what we're dealing with.
Well, let's try to be rational about it and, you know, support, support, I I I didn't say, I was just making sure you didn't go beyond rational. So that was good, but let and let's keep it that way because, um, there is pressure, there's pressure from the companies. As as somebody said, it might have been you, you know, companies trying to sell these things are going to promote them wherever they can sell them.
There was briefly talked about earlier, energy audits, and I don't know if we can legally insist that somebody does an energy audit, but I think that's something we could send to the legal department, say, could we say as a first step, if you are really want solar and, you know, you can put it in this place, it's not going to be seen, it's an exemption. Do we require them to actually go through an energy audit to make sure they've done everything they can do that's not visible, like insulation and things like that, um, to make their house energy efficient? I I just, there was a talk of that at the city council when we were talking about all this too, it's like, should, can we or do we have a way of forcing people kind of to look at, you know, other aspects of their house that aren't visible, um, to make sure those are all accomplished as well? I don't know if we can or can't, but that could be part of the conversation.
If I could just chime, oh, go ahead.
No, you can.
Sure, all right, I can just chime in here, um, I agree with what you're saying and it comes back to what Andrew touched on originally. And I hope what you guys over here are seeing is the side of the table, it's, it's trying to guide people to, you know, make some good choices and and preserve the city's history and do all this, it's not about saying yes or no, it's about um, encouraging and enabling good choices. And, you know, so I think perhaps you just touched on something really, really good, if somebody comes in with, okay, look, I want to put this on the back of my house. You know, question A, what's the age of your roof? You know, are you going to put a forty, a forty year solar array on a roof that has ten years of life on it? Um, does the color of the shingles match? Is it dark or is it, you know, a light gray shingle? Uh, have you insulated your house? Do you have new windows? And maybe that's somewhere, and I, and again, that's another whole subject, but, you know, maybe there's a way to incentivize this kind of stuff. Because at the end of the day, solar panels are great, but they have a useful life. And the absorption rate of those solar cells, okay, I'm not the engineer, sorry, but I do know absorption rate deteriorates over a period of time from talking to friends of mine that have them. And we're not talking twenty years, we're talking five to ten years. A good Anderson window or a Pella window, that's more like a lifetime, the life of the house. So perhaps, you know, Counselor Moreau, what you just said, it may be, you know, a little questionnaire and maybe you can't enforce it, but maybe it stimulates the thought process. Maybe that's kind of what our role is here too, like just stimulate the thought process.
Well, I I would just add, energy, there are energy codes, there are requirements. You build a new home and it has to meet energy codes. If you renovate to a certain level, you have to bring things up to code. So there is an opportunity to do that. I mean, uh, there are requirements, there. So if you're looking for that, I think that's something that should be incorporated into the permit process. Uh, if you're renovating your house to a certain degree, you have to bring it up to code, you have to bring it up to fire codes, things like that. You could require it to come up to an energy code. So that is, that is out there.
One, one thing that might, you you might be able to do with that, uh, you could properties with an energy, energy audit that had a certain Properties with an energy, energy audit that had a certain score could get you an admin approval. That you might have to do more of a full review. That might be possible. That's the sort of question we can raise to legal.
Excellent idea.
And.
That's a good point.
That way you're enhancing the environment, but you don't get to go from zero to sixty. Before you've done some other things that don't affect the outside appearance.
So I think this is a terrible idea. I can't believe we're even talking about this. You're going to require people to do an energy audit of their house before they can come in and, and ask for a, a building permit for anything. Um, what are you going to tell the person in the south end that's got that beautiful eighteenth-century wooden door? Um, there and are, are you going to have to have a storm door for that thing? You're going to tell them that uh, their windows are not efficient enough and they've got to change their windows and then maybe we'll allow you to have solar panels. I can't believe this right now. I really don't. Um, what, when we were talking about flat roofs five minutes ago, I think everybody was a, a little bit more uh, realistic. And personally myself, I think that an ordinance. Could be passed that would require all new flat-roofed buildings in the historic district to have solar panels. And I would like to eliminate putting bar rooms on top of every darn building in Portsmouth. That's what happens now. What's more important, a bar or solar panels?
It depends.
What we're talking about actually isn't what you described and were critiquing. I think the idea would be if you wanted, if the H D C wants to go towards an energy, using an energy audit. It could be a ways of entree into a different process of review. That's all.
Okay. I think the planning board could look at this audit. I think that you guys should look at the energy audit first then. And add that on to your agenda.
It's already noted. So. We've got. A list of uh, a few things here that I can read through, but. Anything else that, yes.
And we promised you guys that uh, we will, within a month or two, come back with a list of changes and things and start working on that. We have councillor Blaylock, who's not going to let us sit for nine more years or eight more years. We will do this within a couple of months. Uh, we should have done it a long time ago and I think it'll answer a lot of the questions. Uh, as well as guidelines, education. And make it reasonable to continue to look at solar. Case by case, if we need it, but certainly easier if you're doing it to the backyard or this or that.
Well, you don't have to convince me. But I think if you could agree on a more or less definite timeline, with the more definite, the better. You know, I think that's going to serve you well. And if you don't come up with a definite timeline, it's going to sink like a lead balloon.
Yep.
Like in two months? We can do it in two months perhaps or something like that.
That's one idea, council.
Um, yeah, I just know that council, we're looking for a recommendation, you know, that's what the point of this meeting was. So we, we would like a recommendation from this.
I mean, what I'm hearing, what I was prepared, I'll just read through, I made, you know, definitions like back of the house. Uh, things hanging off the side of the building, sanctuary structures, dealing with those differently, having a list of no's, including no roof or pertinence, obstructions, look at the Charleston examples. Uh, having the front of the house being one area that just is off limits. You can't put something in the front of the house. I would assume that would include siding as opposed to roofs. Um, anything that would permanently damage roof. Having a one or two-page guidance. Introduce what this process is for how you do solar in the historic district. Um, footnote unrelated to solar, but maybe talk about windows at the same time that was brought up. Uh, commercial buildings, flat roofs, I guess it would be commercials slash flat roofs. Might be something else that could have a, a simpler process. And these, again, these aren't fixed. It, you guys need to talk about them and come up with ideas, but. It starts to put some framework within which to work. And also gives the council some ideas, but then if those are. Beginning points. When, I mean. I don't think it's ready to go to staff to be written up from what I'm seeing from you. You're going to need to talk about it. Um, and the other thing I wrote down is energy audit, just for him, to make sure, you know, that's included as a, as a notion. But that's, there's a legal question there as well with that, that one element. Um. Wrap this up in, within two months?
Agreed. Just tell me, you guys tell me.
I think that we, well, depending on what our. Agenda looks like for next month. I mean, I don't see why we couldn't have a second, if, if we only have one meeting, that we should have a second meeting where this is what we talk about for.
You could just have a workshop. And you don't need me to interrupt it.
You do have the public here to speak tonight?
Tonight is a workshop and there will be a public hearing later.
Okay, so I thought it was on the agenda.
No.
No, we only have minutes, so.
Okay. Is this it?
Well, we do need to. If, unless anybody has anything else. They are recommend, I think now you guys get to pull together a recommendation or response to.
Well, before we, the way that mechanically, the way this works is the workshop portion will close and then. The planning board has to decide whether to make a recommendation to council. Now, I read off what I heard, I didn't get to, I saw two and three months. Um, I think you need a number and you guys.
Let's make it one month.
Well, we.
Yeah, that, I think that's a non-star, two months. Who's up for two months?
Two months. I think that next month we can have our work session. And.
That got three votes. Who's up for three months?
Can always come in early.
It's, it's a three to two. I'm not sure how that voted.
We don't need a ton of time to.
I don't think it needs to be complex and even if you don't details.
Right.
You know, it, because that's where staff can help.
I think we're going to have to go through our own vetting process. We have different voices saying different things amongst our, our own board. So I think Reagan, you'll have to uh, tame the lines here.
Yeah. So we can't do it one month? In one meeting?
We can.
In an hour? In an hour?
John, we'll meet next month. And. And then come together with. With. The framework for what we want to do. And bring to the planning department, legal, all of that stuff to, to move forward.
And it may take. Oh, I think two. Depending on us, may already have two meetings next month?
Uh, we should just have one on the sixth, so the, the, the backup would be available.
So two months to come up with something more concrete that will also go back to, and the planning board. Does everybody over here, is, do you have a question?
Are, are we looking for principles as opposed to detailed specifications?
Yeah. Pretty much the way I read them, these are the. Really rough. And I'm sure Peter has better notes than I do, but um. What we've been talking about. If, if we feel, if the planning board feels they understand what the H D C is talking about, the way I've tried to distill it, and I hope I hadn't left anybody out. Then we have to convene. To talk about it and maybe. But when we convene, it's our meetings, it's just a legal thing. We just have to do it that way.
So.
Are we?
Close the working.
Why don't you do it?
Are we good? Are we, do we, we need any? Did anybody have any questions with H D C? You guys, okay, okay. I'm going to close the workshop meeting. I'm going to continue the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you.